We're going to get started back again, so we have the comprehensive annual financial report that we heard at the last session. Superintendent Smith is going to introduce this item.
Actually, Cherie Lewis, who's our Director of Accounting, will come on up and as Director Gonzalez mentioned, this is the second time that this will be in front of you and tonight for official action. And TKW will also be joining us.
Yes. We had made the financial-
Do you want to introduce yourself for the record?
Cherie Lewis, Finance Director. Since the last time, we had one change from the staff report. Roughly, we added the revenue expenses as you requested, Trudy, and we made additional clarity to the self-insurance. So out of the staff report that we submitted on the 26th, that's the only changes that we have on that report since then. Okay? And now I'll leave it up to Tim Gillette, who will discuss the financial statements.
Great. Good evening. Thank you. I am Tim Gillette, Audit Partner with Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick, your independent auditors and accountants, here to present the audit report for your comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, and some other things as well. I'd like to talk first about the CAFR. My version looks like this. Yours might be a little bit different, but you should all have a large financial statement.
Yeah, the same thing.
Oh, great. Looks exactly the same. Most of this is actually the work of Neil and Cherie and their great staff. My part actually begins on what's labeled as page one, but it's maybe a quarter of an inch into the thing. This is the independent auditor's report. You have a clean opinion, which is the kind that you want to get from your auditor, one of the three choices that the auditor can give. Really, the good part of this is the third paragraph where it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position," et cetera. The report then goes on, takes up two full pages, to talk about the degree of responsibility the auditors take for other financial information that appears in the CAFR and so forth. Generally, there are some parts that we don't opine on at all, and there are other parts outside of the basic financial statements that we give what's called an "in relation to" opinion, where we say that it's materially correct or fairly presented in relation to the basic financial statements. And again, there are no issues in any of those things. I always refer people to management's discussion and analysis, which follows the auditor's report. It's a great place to spend some time to help you understand the financial statements, gives you a high-level overview, to help put things in context. And then that's followed by the basic financial statements themselves, both the entity-wide statements and the various fund statements, followed by the footnotes. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through any of that stuff, because I think you've already done that. I'm happy to answer questions, and if questions come up even later on, if you all want to call me at my office or drop me an email, I'm happy to go over anything you want with you. Actually, the next part of this that's mine is way at the back, page 138. There's another independent auditor's report. This is the things that are required by Oregon State Regulations, and we talk about, well, a number of different things that are required. The format's been simplified in the last couple of years. We don't have to address each of them individually. There's nothing too exciting to report back here, which, again, is a good thing. The next thing I would talk about is the so-called "single audit report," the one that we do for the federal government on your expenditure of federal awards. My version looks like this. I don't know, is it attached, Cherie? So it's at the back of yours. Again, my part of it starts on page one. There are actually two reports here that look pretty similar, but they're actually a bit different. The first one, Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Compliance, it's really related to the financial statements themselves and the part we have to do, again, for the federal government. And you'll see there is one finding mentioned here. There are various levels of what findings can be. The worst thing would be a material weakness. This is not a material weakness. The next level down is a significant deficiency. We would call this a significant deficiency. It has to do, had to do with review of P-card purchases. Neil and Cherie were already aware of this, and we're already addressing it by the time we brought it up, so I wouldn't say a huge finding as far as the single audit goes. Yes, I'm sorry, Greg.
But I just want to clarify for public at home that P-card purchases are procurement card purchases.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Didn't mean to get into the lingo. The second report is our report on compliance with basically the federal requirements over the grant spending of the grant funding, if I can spit that out. And there were no findings with any of that part. It's followed by details on all the various federal awards. As you know, you get a fair amount of federal money. It was $68 million that was spent this last year, so to have no findings on that is a good thing. That's followed by a summary of the auditor's results, a single page, and there's a page to talk about the finding with more details, if you want that. And that wraps up that one. And finally, there's the report to the Board of Education, and my apologies, this is my fault, this didn't get to you until today, I think. Yeah, I'll take full responsibility for that. Cherie did not get it before today either. This is still a draft, and actually, there is a correction in here I wanted to point out. There are some things that, under professional standards, auditors are required to communicate with those charged with governance. That would be you folks, of course. And there are a number of topics that we have to communicate on, and I won't go through all of these, because most of them are, it's a fairly clean report. There's nothing unusual. There weren't big disagreements with management or, you know, significant issues, et cetera, et cetera. The error I discovered when I was looking this over before coming over is on page three, where it talks about a letter communicating material weaknesses. That is not true. There were no material weaknesses. There was just that one significant deficiency. So I will correct that before this gets finalized, and my apologies. It's followed by kind of a summary of accounting estimates. The part I might spend just a teeny, tiny bit, the recently issued accounting standards, just to kind of put you on notice, there are some changes that are coming. Both of these that are talked about in here are things that will be effective next year or the year we're currently in, June 30, 2013. And I think the second one is probably the more significant, although I don't think it's a huge change. But it will change. You'll no longer get a statement of net assets as your entity-wide statement, what might be compared to a balance sheet in a commercial setting. You'll get a statement of position, and there are some reasons for that that probably none of you are very excited about, frankly.[531.16][531.16](Laughter). And I think that's really all I've got. Again, it's a very clean, very clean report for an organization the size and complexity of Portland Public Schools. I think you guys probably deserve a pat on the back. Really like to thank Neil and Cherie, and I think I saw Dave and Cheryl, and the whole finance and accounting staff here at Portland Public. They do a very good job, and we couldn't do this without their help and assistance, of course. So again, I'm happy to take questions or discuss anything in more detail, or I'm happy to-
Are there any quick questions before we-
Thank you very much.
Sure. Great. Thanks very much.
We will now consider resolution for 687, acceptance and approval of the comprehensive annual financial report, reports to management, and reports on requirements of the single audit and OMB circular 8-133. Do I have a motion in a second?
No motion.
Director Knowles moves.
Second.
And Director Regan seconds. The motion to adopt resolution for 687. Ms. Soffish, is there any comment? Is there any additional board discussion? We talked about extensive last time, but I think-
I just, again, want to thank staff, and I appreciate you calling out that in an organization this large and this complex, to come out with such a clean record is really testimony to staff and the work they do. And I guess I'll thank you, too, as an auditing firm, that I hear you kind of come and set up shop for three to four months as you work through all of this information. So I know, working in the hallowed halls of BESC, thank you for all the time and effort you guys put in.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now vote on resolution 467, 4687. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution for 687, 4687, support or opposed? Cheryl is still representing, but I see a voting.
Yes.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we move on to-[670.13][670.13](Applause). Enrollment balancing for the Jefferson Cluster, and I remind people that there is no vote on any of this thing today, and so-
This is another one of our regular updates-
It's on the Jefferson enrollment balancing process, and Judy Brennan, Harriet Adair, and Antonio Lopez are the three people who, together as a team, have been leading this process. And just to remind you, this started back in the summer with a team of roughly 30 members of the community who worked with us to plan what the process would be. It then went to individual schools, K through eight schools in the Jefferson Cluster. Each had their own meeting. The planning group came back together and made sense of what they heard in the individual school meetings. We then had a meeting at Jefferson High School of probably 300 members of the community and did work together as an entire cluster, and then went back to the community with the scenarios that you are going to see here tonight, which are probably not what any of the final scenarios are going to look like, but are really meant to weigh concepts and pros and cons and play out some of the ideas that were heard during the first round of community meetings, so that you see what the concepts look like in fact. And feedback that we get from these scenarios will then go into developing a smaller number of scenarios or options. So I'm going to ask that the team, when you give us the update, please, there's been much concern about as we get, as the process gets tighter, and we're looking for the sweet spot about what's the process on the planning end. Can you just lay out what the timeline looks like, so that people get their head around what kind of time we still have as we're weighing these things? So I hand it over to you. Thanks.
Well, good evening to you. Also, on behalf of our team, I'm going to try and cover the first part of this, which will be a quick summary of how we got here and a brief walkthrough of the scenarios. We'll try and keep it to about 15 minutes, but may need a little bit more time just to make sure that we cover these important topics that we've heard a lot of commentary on in the last couple of days. And then most of our time tonight will be listening to you and hearing, you know, what strikes you and what advice you have for us as we move into this next important phase. And my esteemed colleagues will be answering most of your questions. I get my work out of the way early. As a reminder, by itself, it's not enrollment that will directly impact our student achievement, but balancing enrollment does create conditions that we see as essential for increasing student achievement. So I admire the colleagues from Roosevelt Cluster, who provided a wonderful, comprehensive presentation to you a little while ago. When we come to you with our work, we're really narrowly focused on one element that we know touches the whole, but it's, we always want to start from that place, reminding us that we're not looking at all of those changes here, focusing on one area. Why does it matter? Because staffing is based on student enrollment, and when enrollment is low, staff is going to be small, and then that increases the likelihood that not all of our students are going to have access to that core program. Conversely, when enrollment is oversized in our small buildings, we wind up with not enough classrooms to effectively be able to provide that core program. And especially in small schools, where little changes in populations can have big impacts, frequent enrollment variation leads to staff and program instability, people questioning whether it's a good program that they want to stay in over time, lower capture rates, and the like. So we see balanced enrollment as resulting in stable, right-sized student populations, equitable access to robust academic programs, safe and effective learning environments. That's why we come to you every year. Here are the targets that we've collaboratively established that we're trying to shoot for. These numbers are largely minimums, and more important than the overall student number is the number of sections or classrooms per grade level that we see as essential to provide a core program effectively to all of our kids. And you see what can happen when it's too small, and again, what we said, what happens when it exceeds or goes above that 100 percent utilization. We're going to share with you just visually the difference when you have two small schools that are only operating with one or two sections per grade level that come together to be a larger school, the amount of program and opportunities that are available, not just for students, but for staff, is a big difference. It's a notable difference. And while we are not here to brag about the process that we did with the community to get to this result, when we hear from parents and community members and staff in those schools, they speak very positively about those changes and what it means for their students. So the cluster that we're talking specifically about with you tonight is described here. It includes our Humboldt and Tubman campuses that don't have students this year. We'll also be talking about the access program, and we'll note that it may be necessary to involve other schools to fully right-size, if that's the route that we choose to take. So a little bit about how we've developed what we're calling "scenarios," which is what we're spending most of the time on tonight. We started by looking at our overall enrollment. So right now, there's about 4,200 K8 students who live in the Jefferson pre-K cluster. It's not growing as fast as some other areas of the district. We see about 4,300 in 2015, and we kind of use 2015 as our target year to see if the changes that we were thinking about, that we were conceiving of, could make enough of a difference by that point or be trending in that direction. So you'll see 2015 as the number that we refer to through this.
Judy, are these PPS students?
Yes.
Okay. So there are other students that we're not aware of that aren't reflected in this?
Yes. This reflects public school students that we can count.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So what we see is relatively low capture rate. So we have charts that are, you can see this one here, and then there's another one for the audience over there that shares that baseline condition with the other schools. And you see that our capture rates in these schools, the number of neighborhood students who choose to attend that school, is lower than it is in most other clusters, I think in all other clusters. And again, that's students who are attending public schools. There's a lot of reasons for that, but one thing that we see, and we've heard clearly from community members, is that if more students were choosing to attend the schools in this cluster, there are enough students to fill eight schools. So because we look at closures as a last resort, we started from that place and said, what does it take to fill and use eight campuses well across this cluster? And that's what you'll be seeing tonight. We also did research, and Dr. Adair can go into much more depth with this, about configurations, specifically about middle grades configurations, and the question being, what is their one ideal configuration where you can assure greater success for students? The answer, based on this research, is no, that it's more than the size of the school or any specific grade arrangement, it's the number of students in a grade level that matter, more than across a whole school. And it's the quality of the curriculum, the programs, and the implementation of what you're doing, what you try and do. As long as you do it well, you have a better chance of being successful. So we've also used this to drive our thinking around the scenarios. And finally, as Superintendent Smith mentioned, we've gone through a robust community engagement process and have heard from hundreds of stakeholders in this cluster, and they helped us develop these, what we're calling guiding principles, many of these statements coming out of the meetings that we've had with these families, what they see is most important for their schools and for their students. Many of these universal concepts that you would want to see in any school articulated clearly for the Jefferson pre-K cluster. So those are sort of the three areas that most drove us to develop scenarios. And we use the term "scenario" because it is broader, rougher, and less precise than words like "options" or "recommendations." We are not making recommendations at this time. We're trying to carve a set of views of how the things could change, so that we can start, have a better sense of how those changes might work, might play off each other, and then take it to a next level of something more concrete. So we have six broad sketches that we've released to the community last Wednesday and that we would like to share with you tonight. They're intentionally meant to contrast the degree of changes that could impact each school, and we believe that that will help us and community members identify pros and cons and the types of trade-offs that you have to make between the schools to achieve better results than what we see now. Beyond this, we will be developing a next set of options, two or three, narrowing down from six down to two or three, hoping to do that in time for winter break, so people don't go through that long period with no more knowledge about this than they have now. And we see that those might be hybrids of the best ingredients, if you will, from the scenarios that we've started with. It's important to say that they will include more details than what you see about the scenarios now. So things like boundary changes, high school feeder pattern impacts, even possible boundary changes with schools outside the cluster are something that you will see more specifically when we get down to a smaller set of options, instead of trying to model every single outcome for a lot of options. Facility, transportation, staffing impacts, and overall timeline for how we could effectively implement this. We'd like to see changes start next fall, so that we can begin some changes, so that some of, you know, so that we can get closer to increasing program access and relieve some overcrowding, but we don't know that all of them would be implemented in one fell swoop. Certainly, the Fabian rebuild portion won't be. We also know it's important to look at the impact to specific programs in special education, special student populations, and we fully intend to do that in collaboration with staff from other departments. So that's what you can look forward to in the next couple of weeks. It's critical that we do some listening now from you, listening to you and others to get there. As you look through these scenarios, please keep in mind that we see a potential for an early learning center on the Humboldt campus and have designated that as the most likely use. Because of that, we're not modeling pre-K classrooms in the future at any of our other schools that you see in this. We want to acknowledge that every configuration here for Fabian is considered temporary, and that the long-term opportunity to build on the three-to-PhD partnership and to modernize the school means that a full set of changes for that is still going to be developed. However, it's one of our smallest campuses. They're growing. They don't have enough room to continue growing through that change. I also want to point out that we did not model any facility changes in these scenarios. So we didn't assume that we could bring on portables, add classrooms. We assumed our facilities stay as they are. How do you change the enrollment to meet the facilities? If there are opportunities to change the facilities along the way, it could modify these scenarios. I also want to point out that Oakley-Green will convert to a neighborhood program. You know, it's operated for several years, the K-5 Arts and Technology Focus Option. We would see that ending through this. It's one of the smallest components of the school, and we would look to use it primarily as a neighborhood program. And that access as a program is included in five of the six scenarios, but of cour-, and we will be starting conversations with the access community tomorrow afternoon to talk through what these mean for them. Okay? So in a moment, I want to walk you through at a pretty high level what's in those scenarios. We'll be doing the same thing at a series of meetings that you can see up here that are all happening this week. We think it's very important that we go from development stage to listening stage. Remember, we're a pretty small, lean staff that don't have a lot of resources to do this, but we're, so we're doing our best to change from coming up with ideas to listening to a broad group of stakeholders to what those ideas could mean. We're hoping by, through next week, so up until December 12th, that we'll have enough input, that we'll be able to tailor options down to a leaner set, that we can add many more of those details to that people are really craving, and that's what we would be releasing back to you probably around winter break. I also want to point out that there are multiple ways for people to give us input. We learned through this last round of having 11 meetings in the community, it was wonderful to see so many people turn out for meetings, but not everybody comes to a meeting. And so we've arranged for feedback sheets that people can pick up at schools. We're talking about having staffed tables at schools for at least one day during this time, so that people can come and drop off and ask questions. And of course, there's the meetings, there's our online resources. So we're trying to have as many different ways. We're also doing direct phone calls in languages other than English to families, so that they're getting the call in their native language and can talk through the scenario, the ideas in their native language over the telephone, instead of having to come to meetings. So after all of this, we see coming back to you in January with the smaller set of scenarios, continuing community input, probably more, at least one more forum in the community at that time, before making a staff recommendation to the superintendent, which would ultimately come to you. Ideally, decisions are made in January, but it may take a little bit longer. It just depends on how much time we need to fully feel like we've heard from everybody that we need to and that we've crafted the best results. Okay. So now I'm going to move you into the scenarios, and how I thought I would do that is just put up a big map, and I can use the cursor to, oh, no, I can't. This would be funny. I can use the cursor to point to things a little bit. It's just a little tricky. I don't have a laser pointer with me tonight, so bear with me. See if the laser works in that. It wasn't working earlier. You should also have a larger version of these at your desk, and there's about 20 of these up in the back there, if there are any community members who want a better peek at it. And I'm also referring to the two-page handout in little, tiny font that we shared last week. So what I thought I would do is just describe at a high level what each of these changes bring. I don't know why that happened.
Because we're messing with the cursor.
Oh. And then we'll be ready for your questions. Okay. So this first scenario, we're calling Scenario A, and it imagines that the entire cluster moves to a K-5 middle school configuration. So one of the perpetual questions in this cluster is, should we bring in a middle school to meet the needs of mid-level learners? This says the answer is yes, and we'll do it for all students. In order to accomplish that, two schools become middle schools, Oakley-Green and Tubman. I'm not going to try and point. In this, Oakley-Green is fed by Beach, Chief Joseph, Woodlawn, and part of Fabian. So when I say "part of Fabian," let me describe that, and some of you may know, that the Fabian boundary is very, very large. It includes the area around Concordia University, closest to the school, and it also includes the area near Delta Park, Hayden Island. It reaches far north. It wraps around and covers industrial area that doesn't have students. It certainly brings in many students from Hayden Island, Delta Park area. Right now, those areas have different high school options. So the northern part has the option of attending either Jefferson or Roosevelt for high school, whereas the Concordia area of Fabian has the option of attending Madison or Jefferson. So in a couple of these scenarios, where we take Fabian down to a K-5 school temporarily until it's rebuilt, we do split those middle-grade students in places that sort of follow those high school lines. So in this case, Fabian would become a K-5 school, and some of the students, the students north of Delta Park, Hayden Island, would go to Oakley-Green, which is a, and the rest of those kids would feed to Roosevelt, whereas the other part of Fabian would go to Tubman. Another thing that I want to point out regarding the Oakley-Green feeder pattern is that, so Chief Joseph is a school that's becoming very crowded, and Beach is a school that has a relatively small neighborhood program in comparison to Spanish immersion, which is in high demand. So this imagines that Chief Joseph becomes the Spanish immersion campus, that we, the line, the neighborhood line between Beach and Chief Joseph disappears, and they become one neighborhood with a K-5 school, neighborhood school at Beach, and then the- and then the immersion program as a whole school moves into Chief Joseph. So moving down to Tubman, which would be the second middle school in the cluster, you see the feeder pattern of the portion of Fabian that I mentioned, as well as Vernon, King, and Boise Elliott. And I want to point out that because these are either relatively small capture, catchment areas, like King is one of the smallest catchment areas, and/or because of traditionally very low capture rates, this leaves a set of pretty small feeder schools. So they're small as K-5s and they're small as enough to, they're almost too small to build a critical mass of students into Tubman. So in order to expand this scenario and make it more workable, we would likely either have to involve additional students coming in from outside the cluster, so from, like, create other feeder schools outside of the cluster line into Tubman. And that could be done in a variety of ways. And/or make significant boundary changes to right-size the K-5 boundaries for specifically King and maybe Vernon. And possibly even look at consolidating within those schools. So in order to go within all K-5 middle school configuration, there's a lot more work that we would have to do to sharpen this up. But we wanted to show it as a representation of what could be and sort of the ultimate answer to the question of if you had middle schools, what if you had all middle schools K-5s? Okay?
I think it's also an answer to the question of why aren't there two middle schools in the Jefferson cluster, which gets asked pretty consistently.
So we have two other ways of envisioning middle schools returning to the cluster. The first of these cites it at Oakley-Green. And you can see the feeder pattern is, is similar to what you just saw. And these are double-sided, so you, you'll find this on the backside. In this case, we didn't mess with Chief Joseph and Beach. We let them stay as they are, but keep in mind that means that Chief Joseph probably stays overcrowded. And the neighborhood program at Beach stays relatively small in comparison to Spanish immersion. They fit better in the building because it's only sixth grades instead of ninth. And in this scenario, all of Fabian comes together to one middle school. Excellent. And, okay. And then there are three schools that remain K-8s in this configuration. They kind of have the grayish background on them. Vernon make, there's no changes to Vernon in the scenario at all. And because right now their program is, is, in the lower grades, it has a good size, but by the middle grades, they lose a lot of students. There are some concerns about leaving them with no change. Although capture rate increases would be good there. The access program moves from Saban, which is the next school over, to King in this scenario. And those two things, to get two entities together, King Neighborhood and Access, are about the size that we would want a K-8 school to be. And bringing access onboard, it'd be similar to when you add something like a Spanish immersion program. All of the students don't merge all day long. They're separated for most of their core classes by grade level and they're staffed that way. But you have the ability to consolidate your needs for enrichments, for administrative, for supports, and, and additional services, professional development. There's a lot that you can get out of bringing two schools together, which is why we're envisioning it here. And with Boise Elliott-Humboldt, there's no change proposed for them in this. However, there is the opportunity to look at repurposing the Tubman campus, which may be more suitable over time to serve what could be 500 to 600 K-8 students. So that's a conversation that we would want to have continue. Again, I want to point out in every one of these, you see Humboldt Early Learning Center in the center, right there by Jefferson High School. Okay, so then I think that's everything on this, on the second middle school scenario. And the third way that we are looking at the potential of bringing a middle school in the cluster would be to have that one location be Tubman, which is a campus that doesn't have kids on it this year. Here's the feeder pattern that it would likely take to bring enough kids forward to make that a full middle school, again, because of the relatively small size of some of those programs that would be feeding it. So in this one, all of Fabian students would come together to Tubman, again, temporarily likely until a, a more long-term decision is made. Woodlawn doesn't change. It's similar to the circumstances I described with Vernon a moment ago, a relatively small middle grades program that wouldn't be enhanced in any way with these changes. I want to point out that internal boundary changes in the cluster could make some small improvements there. And as we go to a smaller set of scenarios, we will definitely be trying to point out places where we could see potential for boundary change. We bring the Oakley-Green and Chief Joseph campuses together here. And we think that by adding the access program, we would have sufficient students to continue operating on two campuses. One challenge is that in looking at what access, where access could maximize their unique program and how it serves students is they like the opportunity to have younger students on a campus with older students so that they can access higher-level curriculum. In this scenario, because you'd have one campus serving lower grades, we don't know exactly what the configuration would be, K-3, K-4, or something, you wouldn't be able to do that quite as much as if all the kids were all together on one campus. So that's one thing to point out. So as I said, three different ways to look at how we might bring a middle school into a cluster that currently does not have one. Oops, that's an important one. So because Beach and King, okay, because as I said before, King is a relatively small area right now that would be a small K-5, we looked at basically erasing the boundary line between those two schools, allowing one school to serve as a standalone Spanish immersion and the other to be the more robust neighborhood program. We would have to decide exactly what that would be. It's, it's viewed here as Beach being the immersion school and King being the all-neighborhood school. So you get a better neighborhood, bigger neighborhood school. You get the potential to increase the numbers of students in Spanish immersion. The downside is you have to split them between two campuses that are not right next door to each other to achieve it. So I'd like to move on then to our last three scenarios, which show you how we could reconfigure the cluster without converting any schools to a middle school. And the first of these is the most imaginative. It's the most dramatic. It brings all dual campuses or shared campuses into the cluster. So as I've described to you in a couple of these where we bring Oakley-Green or Chief Joseph together, or Beach or King together, in this one, we said what if that was the whole cluster? What could we do to maximize the number of students by grade level that are attending K-8 schools, keep as many kids as possible in their local area, and better use our buildings, some of which aren't big enough to house, you know, 700 or 800 students? So we hit upon the idea of creating shared campuses. And you see the four pairings here. Chief Joseph, Oakley-Green, and we would consider Access to be a part of that. Beach with Boise Elliott, again, with the potential to see if the Tubman campus is an appropriate use for that, that part of the configuration. King and Vernon, who also have the added benefit of both being international backglowery at school. So you get more robust program opportunities across grade levels for kids whether they're in the PYP or the middle years program. And then Fabian, Woodlawn, temporarily sharing a boundary and configuring in a way to use the Fabian, maximize the Fabian campus in the short term, then deciding in the long term how to work together. So, okay. So I'm just going to let you sit with that one for one second and then say, if we weren't making quite as many changes to our Cade structures, but we were still largely working in a Cade environment, the next two scenarios posit a smaller number of changes that we could make that still move us in the direction of balancing enrollment. So I'm going to start at the bottom on this one where Boise Elliott-Humboldt stay without change. Beach stays without change. Boise Elliott-Humboldt has the continued option to look at migrating down to the Tubman campus. In this scenario, Access comes over to King, which is right at the next school of where it's located right now. Chief Joseph and Oakley-Green come together. Without Access, there may not be enough students to support both campuses over time. So we're starting from the assumption that students who have come to Oakley-Green as part of their K-5 choice program would be allowed to continue and merge with the Chief Joseph students so they wouldn't be assigned back to their neighborhood schools necessarily. But as those students aged out, there would be a smaller group, a cohort of just neighborhood students coming behind them with fewer transfers. And if that happened, there may not be enough students to support both buildings. So we may have to phase into a, a time when only one of those campuses, Oakley-Green being the biggest one, might work if we went with a scenario like this and thought that this was one of the strengths that we should continue. And then regarding Fabian, again, converting back to a, a K-5 school, but having its middle grade students split in two locations. One over to, one set would go over to Vernon. They would continue to have the same high school choices as the rest of the Vernon students. And it would increase the size of the middle grades program in that Cade school. They do have to merge into an existing Cade school to do that. The students in the northern part, the Delta Park Hayden Island, would come on down to Woodlawn where they would share the same high school options. And finally, our last vision for Jefferson Cluster, or our last starting vision. Let me say it that way, because there are many more visions to come, we hope. Many of the things that you saw in, in the last model, Boise Elliott-Humboldt staying the same, King and Access coming together. In this one, we think about splitting Fabian differently. And we decide that perhaps that Humboldt Early Learning Center, where we expect to have pre-K, Head Start, wraparound services, would also be a great place to house a kindergarten-level program for Fabian temporarily while we're waiting for the modernization. And if we did that, then the rest of the grade structure, first through eight, would likely be able to remain on the Fabian campus. So because of that, no Fabian students coming into Vernon or Woodlawn middle grades. They would stay as they are now. It does, I've mentioned a couple of times, these challenges with Beach having smaller neighborhoods than Spanish immersion and Chief Joseph being overcrowded. Well, this conceives of not just a dual campus, but a tri-campus, where you would create a larger neighborhood program, K-8 neighborhood program, between the Beach, the Chief Joseph, and Oakley-Green boundaries. And you would lose, use two of the campuses for that and then you would use one campus for your K-8 Spanish immersion program. So it's a way to try and solve the problems that you have within those buildings and those boundaries and those neighborhoods, just within those three schools. So as you've heard over and over again, these are conceptual ideas that we've brought forward to try and elicit a level of response from you and from community members about what could work for you and what you would like us to never consider again. And that we would then take that learning and sharpen it down to something more meaningful. So that's staff, that's my part of the presentation. Amazing experts here to answer questions and we're happy to listen to your comments.
I'm curious about, a lot of the scenarios are particularly those affecting Beach and the immersion program. Tell me a little bit about the options for continuation of that immersion program post, post-Beach. Let's, we can look at Scenario A, I guess.
So could you clarify continuation?
Oh, continuation. If, if parents or if, if students decide we want to continue an immersion program, what's the option after leaving that school?
Oh, beyond eighth grade?
Right, right.
So it will be Roosevelt?
Roosevelt.
Yep, would continue.
Okay. And another thing too, and I don't know if this is a question, but, but more of a comment. Some of these, particularly when we're looking at separating out the, particularly at Beach, the neighborhood portion and the immersion portion, looks like most of the scenarios, it would be a combination of that, you know, that neighborhood school at another location or a combination of locations. But it would require some, some growth in the immersion program that would fill a school. So this is where, you know, the devil is in the details a little bit. How do we, how do we know we're going to be seeing some growth in that immersion? How do we make sure we accomplish that growth so we don't see a few years down the road an immersion program that was once successful but was never really able to ramp up?
And that will be, that will be the challenge. Well, not a challenge. I think that we have enough parents in the neighborhood that are interested in the immersion program that we can start, for example, three kinders and just continue that pattern. Right now, they have two in the, in the early grades. So I do not think it will be very difficult to grow the program.
And then the potential for that to take away from other schools and then that whole unintended consequence of more kids going to one school and fewer in the other. I mean, I don't know if you've modeled that at all with, if, if Beach Spanish immersion were standalone and grew. That's just one of five main factors to consider here.
I can tell you that we've modeled, we didn't model the, on paper. We did some modeling. We said with a double-sized neighborhood, half of that new class of 26 or 28 kids would come from the neighborhood, so that's 14. Does that mean the neighborhood program would still be big enough? Probably. Those other 14 are likely to come from six to 10 other students. So the impact is maybe one to two other students per school, per year. So it's not a big hit. What we would most want to see with this expansion, because it, it's in line with what you've heard from GM Garcia and Von Trong, is making sure that it's our ESL students who have, you know, high access to that. So it's really identifying, and those students are pretty broadly dispersed.
Right.
So.
Okay, no question. So I think you guys have probably been in the audience a couple of times when we've talked about middle schools versus K-8s. And we asked Roosevelt about it, and I think we asked the Franklin Cluster about it, talked to the Grant Cluster about it. And I appreciate the references that you all put together. I also have seen studies that say K-8s are the way to go. So I guess my question has to do more for the board, not really for you all, but I think we need to make a decision about K-8s versus middle schools. And, you know, how do we want to proceed as a district? Do we want to continue to have a split in our clusters about some K-8s, some middle schools? Do we want to say, do we want to take a position that one is better than the other? I, I don't want anybody in any of our clusters to feel like they are a second-class cluster because they don't have a middle school. I think that, I don't think that's why we pick a middle school for a cluster versus having everybody be K-8. But I think that's one of the foundational or fundamental questions that we got to talk about before we make any decisions as big as these. And I think that it will help us as we move through our other clusters and our, excuse me, doing our enrollment balancing, to just have a couple of these questions that keep gnawing at us so that we keep bringing up over and over again, somewhat subtle so that the public understands where we come from as a district. And if it is going to be that we just want to throw it up in the air and try and make a decision based on, I don't know what, then that's fine too. But I, I think that we need to have a conversation about it to decide where we're going to go. So that's one of them. And then the other one that I was concerned about was the split campus idea. And that, I'm concerned about that because I live in the Beverly Clarie Grant neighborhood and I don't hear, I don't hear any good about that. I only hear complaints. And that's not to say that we couldn't do it differently or better or anything. I just am, just making that aware. And then the other thing that I had two other, two others. I think we also need to make some decisions about immersion and learn a little bit more about immersion and where do we want immersion to be and how important is that to us? And that'll factor directly into this decision around Beach. And then also, I want to make sure that we're being aware of IB. The one scenario that has Vernon and King sharing because they both have IB, I think that's great. Not that I like all the rest of that scenario, but I think that that's something that we should consider as well. So those are my, those are my four big ones that I think we need to think about.
I'm not hogging all the time.
Or you can just go ahead and do one and then.
Okay, I, I, my list is long enough that I'm not, I wasn't really expecting answers really tonight. I'm figuring there's going to be an FAQ and other opportunities. So I just wanted to get these out there, so I'm not expecting. So I guess first one would just be around the racial equity lens tool that we now have and wanting to make sure that is folded into this, invisible throughout this, both for the community and for staff and for us. So just wanted to say that. And I'm looking to see that when we get the next level of analysis from staff. And I'm looking, including myself, that we will all commit to using this land. And I'm looking, including myself, that we will all commit to using this lens when we make this decision. Second, you mentioned the special education, but that was one thing that was really glaring in the first round of what about special education? So I appreciate that you're going to be including that in the next scenario so we know what about minimizing disruptions, where will classrooms go? And I want to be confirmed that, that special education staff are deeply involved in all of this. Another one is just if there were, you know, just to have more transparent and open discussion about it, staff really thinking that there does need to be a closure or two now? And if so, have you envisioned a scenario where there could be sort of a planned reopening in the future should growth occur? And what could that look like? I think the district has done closures on kind of a negative downward spiral kind of mode here. We have an acknowledgement that we have the number of students living. We just don't have the number of students attending. So how would that be a positive at all, if it's possible? And/or could we do something like the growth challenge that the district issued to Riki, that you will grow or you will be closed? And here's, you know, supports and, well, that actually wasn't, it was more giving the parents the opportunity to do the marketing. Anyway, that kind of challenge to grow, has that been tried in Jefferson? What could that look like, given the huge amount of parent involvement that we're seeing? Which resulted in a significant jump in enrollment in Riki to the point where they're now overcrowded, which is another issue. Let's see, access, you talked about they are going to start now going to be involved, which is great. I was concerned that they hadn't been today because that's such a huge piece. And just more, you alluded to this, Judy, but just a little more in detail because we've had some issues in the past with shared programs in the same building, and it hasn't always panned out very well. So would really want to be thoughtful about that and understand the benefit for the neighborhood side, if you will, in terms of what the students would have access to. As well as accesses, I understand they have a long waiting list, so do they have a long-term need for more space? And, you know, I don't want to move them and then have to move them again and cause more disruption. Around the hybrid model, I do believe in a hybrid model because that's what we have in most of the district. I think we need to be more planful about what we're providing for sixth through eighth grade students, no matter what the configuration is. I think one works well for, better for some students than the other. We have strong adherence for both, and it works really well for different students. And our, but to me, the issue is that lack of choice within a cluster. So I'm very interested, I'm not dead set on it, but I'm really interested in pursuing a viable middle school within this cluster. So I'd, I'd like a lot more detail about how the formation of a new, if, if there's community feedback that that's something that folks want to pursue. How would a formation of a new middle school planned for success look like? Would there have to be, could it really happen next fall? Would there need to be sort of a year transition time to close a school? Like hypothetically, if you closed Oakley Green, you'd hire, you know, fabulous new team. It would, could be renamed Tubman, being hypothetical here. But what would that process look like in terms of ensuring that we would have a successful start and sustainable school? In terms of, I mean, parents aren't going to come unless they know what they can have there for their students, right? So if we knew X number, 100 of, 400, 500, 600, what could be provided? Conversely, if only 100, 200, or 300 show up, what does that mean? You talked about a 2015 kind of target date. So does that mean there's kind of a grace period? I don't have the sense we have a lot of extra funding to subsidize during growth. So just all those issues. Let's see. And relatedly, is there any possibility of developing any kind of new program? Whether it's immersion, finally replicating Sunnyside Environmental, IB, whatever it might be? Could we replicate Da Vinci Middle School, which has an extremely long waiting list? What would be entailed in that? Is that realistic? Just, just to have that discussion. I'm concerned about the suggestion that Boise Elliott and Humboldt might need to move to Tubman because of overcrowding. Why would we have moved Humboldt to Boise Elliott if there isn't room for them? So maybe I'm misunderstanding that? Or if it's an issue more around wanting to use the Tubman building for the sake of using the Tubman? That, that one concerned me because I would really like to see some stability for at least a few years for that community. I'm almost done. And then more detail around the access to pre-K would work, how that would work with an early learning center in Humboldt? What would the catchment area be in terms of family travel times? And would we still have Head Start at other locations? Would we end up, bottom line is, would we end up with fewer slots for pre-K kids? More or the same number? What, what would be, I know we'd gain the additional wraparounds. Another piece is the PD, the professional development that you mentioned, which is, which is great. Three more, real quick. So other one is, comes up a lot, that there needs to be district support for the schools in the Jeff Cluster and that there isn't. I think it would be helpful within the racial equity lens, but also to be detailing what are those additional supports that do currently exist? And could there be more? What would they look like under the different scenarios? But just to really bring out, whether it's SEI wraparounds, other instructional specialists, whatever else. Again, I want to confirm our understanding about this timeline and is there kind of a transition period that you're allowing for? And what does that mean in terms of communities really working on building their enrollment and getting their capture rate up and working with their, with their folks who may have been reluctant to attend? Regarding Fabian, I'm hearing you say that they really can't, that there has to be some change for them, that they really cannot hang on for just a few more years in their current building with their current configuration. And I just want to check that because I'm, again, really concerned about creating upheaval for them when they're about to be completely changed potentially. And then my last comment is just the split campus thing is, I would have a lot of questions about that. So thank you for indulging me and reading all that, and I'm sorry to take up so much time.
I'm going to look to the side before we continue on this.
I just have a couple of things which are somewhat fundamental. My two big questions really are, how does the addition of a middle school help this cluster when the problem seems to be small K, six to eight populations? So if we're, if you want, I think that there has been a lot of success in, in the K eight model. And I don't see how putting a middle school in the mix helps when the problem is small populations in your middle grades. So I'm just perplexed by that. And then the other really fundamental question is, what about this is going to cause the capture rate to go up? Because if you move everybody around in different buildings, but the capture rate, I mean, the highest capture rate in this cluster is maybe 60%. And the low is just 33. What about this is going to make any difference? Because you're, you're basing it all, this number of school, on getting the capture rate to 80%. And I'm, I'm not seeing, there's got to be another piece to the puzzle before I'm going to accept that that is going to work. So those are, those are kind of my foundational concerns before I can get into who should go where.
I also wanted to ask about the middle school idea because when we, when you put out this sheet, and you talked about identifying goals. You talked about talking with hundreds of parents and students and staff and community members over the past few months. And then you came up with kind of five bullets of things that everybody, for the most part, agreed to. And having a middle school wasn't on that list. Instead, it said that all middle school grade students deserve access to high-quality programs and qualified teachers. It sounds to me, from what I've heard, that that's the key interest more than having a middle school. I think their perception is if you have a middle school, maybe you'll have more. But I don't know if that's the reality. So I, I kind of have the similar question about, did we really hear that people want a middle school or not? I kind of have a 30,000-foot level question, which might get to this capture rate idea. You know, when we talk about the Humboldt and Boise Elliott merge, one of the things that people seem to say is with so many more students all of a sudden, it's such a stronger program. And when I look at some of these scenarios, you're still ending up with lots of schools with less than 400 kids. I mean, not even beginning to meet a minimum target. So if there is an assumption that some larger schools would provide more opportunities, I guess I, I question what we have down on our sheets as our targets. So right now, we say our program size target for K five is 450 students, for K eight is 500 students, that one I don't understand at all. And for six eight is 600 students. So one of the things that you said earlier, Judy, was that what's the most critical is that you have a strong number of kids in each grade level. It's, it looks to me like in our K five model at 450, that assumes three grades, three classes per grade level. If you followed that up through a K eight scenario, you would be looking at 675 students. If you have kindergarten through eight, nine grades, three levels each, that comes to 675. So I'm not sure whether this 500 number is an old number that we looked at once upon a time or whether we've revisited it, but I think it would be worth revisiting. And then same for a middle school. We say here that, I'll let you talk in one second. What we say here is that a middle school should have at least three feeder K five schools. So again, three grades coming up times three schools is nine grades. Nine classes per grade gets you to 675. So I guess I'm, I, I know everybody hates the idea of talking about consolidations and closures. And at the same time, when we saw what happened with Boise Elliott and Humboldt, I think people are seeing the impact of having slightly larger schools in terms of what we can really offer our kids. And to me, that might get to your question about why would the capture rate change? Because we have more robust programs in the, in the area. So I guess I'm challenging the assumptions on school sizes completely.
The other thing I wanted to say, as you were talking, is that I think the problem with a, say, suggesting that K eight should be that big is that we don't have buildings that big.
I agree.
So we have very few places where we can have that big a K eight. We do have some across the district. But we don't have any place to put those students now.
We, well, we have the Oakley Green building and we have the Tubman building for starters. I mean, but, but we, I mean, yeah, I agree. So the, and just one caution from me would be on Fabian. I have a lot of concern about doing temporary changes, especially as we're going into construction there. And I would hope that we could come up with some other scenario. So I guess for me, I don't necessarily like the idea of having kindergarten or somewhere else, but at least it keeps the K eight functional. So I guess I would be leaning more in that direction if we could. The, the temporary changes here and there, I think, are just incredibly disruptive, so.
Dr. Morton Orbelia. And student representative, Gacyan.
Just a couple of quick comments. I think it's, I'm in a processing phase right now and thinking about where, what makes sense to me and maybe what doesn't. I think the, the one thing, the, the capture rate, and Trudy, you had mentioned this, assumptions around capture rate increases is, I mean, that's a hu, it's huge. Plays a big role in, in the success of these, whatever scenarios we, we choose. And it makes me consider a number of community members representing a number of schools saying, give us time, give us time, we'll build our, we'll build our middle, middle program. That's what we're asking for in these scenarios, is time to build our capture. The, so that's, that's something that, that it does concern me particularly, and perhaps this will come in more detail, but particularly without a strategy around, around that. This has been mentioned before, but the, the split campuses, shared campuses, it, it seems really complicated and seems, perhaps gives us some flexibility if, in case there isn't an increase in capture, that, that one closes down and then another one, or the other one stays open. That, that just seems like us sort of setting ourselves up for a scenario that isn't going to be, isn't going to be favorable. I'm really interested in finding, finding a way for, for this cluster to build a robust immersion program. I think it's something that, that we've seen is, is a big interest to individuals to draw from within the cluster and to draw from outside of the cluster too. But I think, and it certainly is benefiting those students. That's also one of those programs, though, that you need to be able to recruit an adequate number of native speakers of that immersion program. And I know that's also been something that, that has not necessarily come easily for us. The, I want to echo what folks have mentioned around Fabian. What a great little community there that, that exists at that school. And, and during a really exciting time, I'd love for us to, to keep them together as, as much as possible. And, and that, I'll leave it at that. But the other, the other piece in, in some of these scenarios, particularly when we're pulling folks out of, I guess this is a point of clarification, like Scenario A, for example, where we create Tubman as a middle and Fabian students are, are being pulled out into that Tubman. Fabian students that would normally be sort of in this Jefferson-Madison split. Does that mean that they go to a Jefferson-Grant split? And does that, or do they stay in that Jefferson-Madison split based on where they, where they live? Okay. I just wanted to, wanted to clarify that because that obviously has implications for Madison in that case. And, and lastly, one of the things that, that I've heard do, you know, in community input, you know, as the community come out and said, we want K eights, or they come out and said, we want middles, and the answer is yes, to both, to both. The, and I think it, you know, and a little levity there, but it's, it really is. And I think because people recognize that it is a matter of fit, it is a matter of choice. I think that the numbers sometimes, although numbers we've been shown recently show that it's kind of a wash in terms of test scores and K eights outperforming middles in, in some ways and vice versa in others. It offers more of a distraction than anything. And really what it is, is a, is a matter of what's going to be best for the individual student, what's going to be best for the family and what, what they feel comfortable with. And having that option, I think, is, is important in, in the cluster. I think, I think the caveat to that is having a really strong option. Having one that has a, a robust curriculum offerings and people are confident in sending their, their kids to.
I just want to, I guess it's a question around the middle school and this idea of choice. If you have a middle school in a cluster, because it's not really choice. It's if you live in the part of the cluster that has, that, that has the middle school, you get to go to the middle school.
What if we made it a choice?
Well, that's my second part. We did that with Beaumont, and we found, you guys probably remember this, that it sucked the students out of Saban and Irvington and made their six eights very weak. And only now that we've stopped that have Saban and Irvington started to grow in their middle school years and been a stronger program.
That was also, I hear what you're saying, but that was also in the era when we had not, when it was still in the implementation of the K eights, where it did not get started out with a clear sense of what the program and/or building can provide or should provide. In other words, that was early and a very flawed implementation of the K eights. We're a lot farther along. I think we have a lot better sense of what K eights need to provide. So I would hope that we would be able to figure, I mean, to me, if we did this hybrid, it would need to be both ways. So that if you were in a, if whatever set of schools ended up being K five to support a middle school, if possible, ideally, those families would have the option to choose a K eight in the cluster instead, and vice versa. And I don't know if that's feasible or not, but that's, you know, but you're right. I mean, you'd have, it would be a definite concern.
I would be concerned about the K eights and the funneling off. And I think that, I think that Director Regan's point is the one, and Mass as well, are, is the point that's, that we really need to worry about. And that is, are we offering our middle schoolers in our K eights a stronger program as we're offering in the middle school? And if we are, then there shouldn't be any issue, so.
Are you concerned about the Jefferson dual assignments that have the option to attend other high schools? Do you think that would have the same effect of giving people an option to attend a middle school? So I think in a couple of the drafts, it gives people the option. So you could choose Jeff from Madison and do you think?
That's the way it is now.
It's always been that way.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
Not, not always, just last few years.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's already that level of complexity in this cluster. So it's like, it'd be great if we could come up with something that reduced complexity.
For the audience.
No, 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 no. I mean, I just, I don't mind having you the conversation, but I think it's important for the people to be able to hear. I can't even hear it myself, by the way.
I was just trying, I was just explaining to you. I was just trying, I was just explaining to Alexia that we've been in this Jefferson model for a couple of years and it came about when we made Jefferson into a magnet school and wanted to provide the students who were in that area, an option to go to either Jefferson or Grant or Madison or Roosevelt, depending on where they lived, so. And I don't know what our percentages are right now. I'd be very interested in that.
Other questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments, but I'm going to take a step back because I know that we have some folks who are in the audience currently that have been through this process and part of this process. And I want to thank them for sticking it out till nine, ten. And there were many more folks here who had signs and their, their presence got a little mixed in with a, a previous comment. So I just want to acknowledge those parents because I know that they were all here and I know they wanted to make a respectful showing that, that there are some requests. And I think the request specifically has been more time because these are really complex. And all of a sudden, it's feeling rushed. I'm still hopeful as I, Judy, I think you did a really nice job of explaining the process and why this first proposal is out and where we hope to get to by the time winter break. And then have a whole another month and a half to actually get down to the details, which I think a lot of people are asking questions about, whether that's not, whether that's enough time. I appreciate you highlighting that it's ideal and we understand that there may be some additional things. So I just, I want to acknowledge the parents and the folks. And I, I'll call out the Levin Project because they facilitated a meeting on Saturday that were doing nice work of organizing parents to get together. Sorry, I'm going to still congratulate parents because the other thing that I've been really impressed with is whether it's on their Facebook page or whether it's in person, the dialogue has been respectful. They've challenged each other about, I didn't say that, or you don't want that, or just because you want that, doesn't mean I want that. And it's been all the way through respectful, understanding that these are our kids and these are really big decisions and that these are really hard. And for those of us, for those folks who can't spend ten hours a day looking at these numbers and trying to figure them out, this feels like it's moving really fast all of a sudden with not an understanding of why it took us so long to get here. So there's many pieces to this. So I just, I guess I want to highlight that and hold out that I still think that there's hope that we can get to, to a place where, where people look and say, okay, this scenario actually does make sense or doesn't make sense. And I just want to highlight or echo from the, from the parents I've spoken to is just this real desire for dialogue, that even this format, you guys speak, we speak, we talk, they think, we, you know. It's, it's a little bit artificial. And so finding ways, and I'll just encourage colleagues to find ways to engage. And I know we hear from many folks in the cluster, outside the cluster, encourage that. I'm going to take a quick step back and just double check because I've heard a couple of things that I guess I want to double check. Director Atkins mentioned special education. Have special education parents receive the same information of these cluster schools that the folks who are neighborhood schools have received? Okay, I'm seeing head nods because I, I've heard that the special education folks that have classrooms in, in those schools have not been notified. I'm still seeing some, just enough why I'm seeing some community members in the back saying, no, they haven't. So it was, it was a concern that we might want to double back to make sure, because, anyway. Did we send scenarios home in backpacks to everybody or did we, how did we notify folks?
We distributed a one-page flyer that was a high level, you know, there's scenarios out. We delivered hundreds of copies of the scenarios to the schools so that parents could either request and come and pick them up. We made them available through our website, which is how many people choose to access them.
Thank you. We, just a thought we might want to consider once we get down to narrow sending.
Just to emphasize, any information that we've done, whether we're, it's something going home in backpacks, it's something that's going to an autodiler, anytime we've done any outreach to a school, it's to every student who's attending that school regardless of their classroom, regardless of their special education, their language.
Okay, thank you. Now to the scenarios, sorry. I want to rec, or echo Director Regan's concern about the target numbers. I, I think that Portland, our public, we're doing a disservice. Folks pride, pride themselves on small neighborhood schools. And I'm just going to share this publicly, that I think if the city's plan is small neighborhood schools, twenty-minute walkables, walkable, we have to work with, work, work with the city to find ways to make that a reality because the reality is our neighboring districts have realized that that's not affordable and we're trying our best to hold on to those. And so I really think that we need to look at those, those sizes to offer the program. The other piece I want to mention is that this is an enrollment balancing process. We know that enrollment balancing, it was one of your first slides, doesn't equalize, doesn't make the school more attractive automatically. We know it presents the, the funding necessary to make, the conditions necessary to make it happen. And so I know some people have expressed a disappointment that we're not looking at, you know, some people have mentioned immersion programs as a high draw. What, what's working at those schools so that we can make sure that we're attracting that capture rate? Eighty percent capture rate, I don't think is realistic right now, so that concerns me. I don't, I think the K eight middle school hybrid, if we can figure out how to let people choose without siphoning off, I, I don't know how we don't do that, but if we can figure that out. So because it's clear the cluster wants both, I think, and some people. So I'd, I'll be interested to see, I'm also not crazy about Fabian being pulled apart and back together. And as I, as I think about the Humboldt Early Learning Center, some things that I heard parents saying is that it was a challenge to go from one school that starts at the same time as the next school and starts at the same time as the next school, especially when they have transportation difficulties. And so I'm not sure how that plays into this or is considered. But it would be, as we're changing from it being cited at the school, that somebody has pre-K eight at their school, which makes it really convenient to drop off, how that impacts some of our families, so.
Can I just piggyback on one quick point around the, the school size issue? I mean, absolutely agree with you around the twenty-minute neighborhood and really being clear on what we can afford and what makes sense. But I also want to just point out that it's throughout this entire district, we have schools that are below the ideal size, whether because of building constraints, boundaries, enrollment, so I wouldn't want to say that we have to hold one cluster, you know, uniquely to a rigid or artificially, you know, and then not, are we going to make a slew of changes in the very next year or two to the whole rest of the district practically? We've got imbalances everywhere. And I know that we can't often hear, just do it all, make every all the changes. Well, we, I know that it's not possible to make all the changes all at once. But I just want to, you know, put out that reminder that we can't just hold one cluster to a higher set or a different set of standards than that we are to the rest of the district.
Thanks for that reminder. That, I appreciate you clarifying that because that, that wouldn't be my intent.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying that.
As we do all of this. And the last, I guess, comment or question I have is, it's similar to what you were saying, Director Atkins, when you were saying the challenge of having a, a neighborhood program inside with an immersion program, there are competing interests sometimes. I think I hear both folks, both sides say that, that it's a challenge. I hear principals, administrators say it's a challenge because they're competing for attention. So when I look at an option, something at King that has IB, has special education, and then we put in access, I think, wow, that administrator just inherited quite a challenge. And I'm not sure, well, I'm going to guess who's going to get the attention, for example. It's a guess, not going to call on which one, but there's going to be one program that's going to demand some attention and the others are going to feel short slided. So considering that as we put these into the options, I think is, is a reality. Okay, I know I said that was my last one. Last one is, sorry, it's just, it's so rich with so many things. And people are transferring a lot in and out of all of these schools. Sometimes it's me because I want, Tamela spoke to it in the Roosevelt Cluster. I want teachers that are responsive to my kid and my culture, so they move to this school. This school is seen as really not good with this culture or this group of people or whatever, and so I'm going to transfer to that one. It's, it's very real and until we, we elevate it, and I've heard some parents wanting to elevate it, I think that's something that we should try to, through this process, have intentional conversations about what does it mean and how, how does it affect, how does it affect us?
Thank you. I agree if you had to bring that up. May I just share one clarification because it's been mentioned a couple of times and I feel bad that this wasn't clear. When you look at this and you see that eighty percent, I want to point out that the model is that eighty percent attend one of the schools in that cluster, not just their own neighborhood school. So when we've talked about our capture rate, which is average fifty-one percent in the Jefferson cluster, we have a significantly higher number of students who are moving around in the cluster already. So about two-thirds, close to those, that many kids are staying in the cluster now. That's what we would look to say, like, can eighty percent of the kids stay in the cluster? We would hope that more of them eventually would, would also be attending their neighborhood school. So I just wanted to clarify that because I'd heard it in a couple of places. Clearly, I didn't do a good job before. We'll make sure that's clear later.
So, I mean, we're over the, the limit and I see a few of my colleagues already saying, hey, you move it along. And, no, 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 no. I mean, I, I think it's important. I mean, I'm not sure that, you know, whether you got enough, you know, feedback today in regards to the scenarios. I mean, part of the, the deal is not necessarily that we're looking to, towards answers immediate right now, but I think that in regards to being able to provide some guidance in regards to initial reactions from, from the board in regards to the scenarios. And, and I think the other part of it is, I think, the task for us is, is, as, as board members, identifying those, those areas where we do have to take some responsibility, whether it's on the, the creation of, of those special programs or, you know, the, the way that the lines are, are drawn in, in this, in this map. Because we, in some ways, we're still working from the context of what's there already. And so it's, it's somewhat fine tuning and, and I see a lot of squiggly lines like going, there are no real straight lines and, and I'm not sure that's the topography of the, of the, I know it isn't. But, you know, of the, of the, in regards to how the lines were drawn. But, but it's also, I think, you know, eventually we need to address those things. Some questions I think that have come up that I think that, that clearly, you know, point towards us as, as board members kind of providing more clear direction because I, there is no consensus, I think, in, in regards to out there that they would hear for a K eight or, or the middle school option in, in the community. And we can try to hear from the folks that speak loudest or, or deal with the reality in regards to what is the, what is it that we're proposing that is going to actually result in, in better academic achievement or better educational options for, for our children in, in this district. And I think, you know, the, the reality, as you pointed out, I mean, this is just one element of that, but it is a, an element that if we put in place, is going to impact the offerings. And so we, we just got to be conscious of, of, of that along, so.
Martin, can I just ask a question? Steph, I mean, we didn't have time tonight to get into a, you know, tearing apart or putting together, did you get enough feedback from us? I know there's going to be lots more feedback in the next several days. Now, I know we gave you way too much feedback, but I mean, in terms of the actual scenarios themselves, we didn't give you real specifics. Is that okay? And you're going to hear a lot, I'm sure, in the next several days.
Hopefully, what would happen is that just the conversation that you're having is the same conversation the community would have.
Right.
Our, it isn't our expectation that it's one of these scenarios or over the other. It's that through thoughtful conversations and posturing and what is, what does this mean? Had you thought about this, that people would come very close to looking at, I'll just use as an example, we really value having a middle school in the cluster, but not at the cost of having four other school communities disrupted to create the middle school because that's what you'd have to do to get the numbers. We'd really like to have a all-immersion program, but, at Beach, but our building is too small, but we don't want to move into Chief Joseph. I mean, there's a lot of, that, all of these scenarios have the things that really work for it and not. And we want the community to begin having those conversations while we're listening. This is probably the most quiet I've ever been in any presentation I've made to the board. And so that, that we can say, okay, this is what we heard here, the key things. This is the thing we heard over and over. And so that needs to be in the smaller set of scenarios that we ultimately present. So it's about having them help us hear more clearly what they think are the things that are really truly their priorities and then making certain that then that gets reflected in what we put down into the smaller set over a period of time. I would just, you know, I cannot not say something about all this mid-level conversation. I've gone from all ends, depending on which thing I was doing, the mid-level redesign or the K eight implementa, pre-K eight implementation. And it really does come down to whatever the scenarios are, it has to be an enhancement of the middle grades. And the Boise Elliott piece, to be honest with you, is I know that they're on the, in the bond with the improvement of the science labs. It isn't that the population is necessarily too small, but if you wanted to enhance the middle grades, and we'll just focus on science, which has been a, a key piece, creation of a science lab at Boise is a little tight. And that, it's not the number of kids, it's now when you take a look at actually creating that program, can we actually get a quality mid-level program in a building that was at once a K eight and then we deliberately redesigned it to be a pre-K five school? And that's very different. So that's why you see the Tubman piece in there. It's not about so much of the numbers.
You can see the frustration, again, it gets back to not.
Absolutely.
The forethought of what do we need to provide for middle grade level kids? And the district has not been doing that these, these many years, so that's.
And our K eight programs do need to enhance at multiple levels, facilities-wise as well as program-wise, right? So we will be back. We did hear, they've taken great notes. I'm kind of glad we didn't have to have the answers. We would have never been able to. You all would still be here tomorrow morning, so that's a.
This was exactly. This was exactly the level of conversation, though. I think you guys did good modeling of when you're looking at the scenarios, it triggers you to be concerned about things or excited about things. That's kind of what we're trying to call. So you did good modeling of what we're looking, the kind of conversation we're looking for, so, you guys, thank you.
If I can add just one thing, I think what Co- Director, no, Co-Chair Belial says about, we're really, we're really thankful for the parents that are here, the parents that are out there in the community because they have been very, very helpful and instrumental in helping us navigate. These are difficult discussions and, and, and we acknowledge that, that they're not perfect, but our purpose and our intent is to do the best that we can. And our parents and the whole cluster have been really just amazing in helping us navigate this.
Are we going to be in a meeting this week? See you tomorrow.
You should announce where the.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, one more, one more go at where we're going to be. Tomorrow night at six-thirty at Beach, this will be a bilingual presentation, so presented in native Spanish. I'm sorry?
He said six o'clock. I'm not sure if that's correct.
Six to seven-thirty?
I heard six-thirty, so.
Six to seven-thirty, same timeframe at Fabian, six to seven-thirty. We'll have translators there as well, but we expect to be able to do a full bilingual presentation in Spanish, English at Beach.
Don't forget to talk about the other things. If you don't come to the meeting, then we're still reaching out.
Absolutely.
You want to tell them what the other pieces are, just to let you hear.
That we've got those feedback sheets that you can get online or at a school or call our office. We can walk you through the scenarios. We're working on the FAQ right now to put online. So we keep trying to take, you know, everything that we're hearing here and, and send it back so that people can, can continue to process and go deeper if they choose. Good night.
Thank you.
And so moving on, we have the Creative Advocacy Network Intergovernmental Agreement. This will be the board's second discussion on the proposing of govern, intergovernmental agreement. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, and our Deputy CFO, David Wind, is going to present the revisions to the intergovernmental agreement that came out of the board's discussion at our last meeting. And tonight is really looking at, okay, is the language now really has addressed the concerns that were raised in the last meeting? We will then prepare a resolution for you and bring it back for a vote on the seventeenth. David Wind?
Thank you, Co-Chairs, Board Members. You had two versions of the IGA in your board packet. I'd like to draw your attention to the second one. And the key place to go on this is page four of the document. And the, the second one on page four should have fairly extensive redlining. And so we made changes predominantly to Section Six, the Supplemental Funding Section, and Section Eight, the Sequential, what is now called the Sequential Course of Study Section, in an effort to reflect the concerns that we had heard from board members at the last meeting. I do want to clarify, there is. I do want to clarify, there is one additional change to the wording of paragraph six that you don't have yet. And that is, the second sentence, funds from the Arts Education Access Fund will be used to meet voter-approved ratio of one to five hundred for a certified arts or music teacher at each non-charter school within the district. That the words "non-charter" should be deleted and the words "public" inserted so that that reads "at each public school within the district educates K five students." And I can explain that change for you. In fact, I better do that now. So we got a question at the our last discussion about how does this agreement and plan apply to charter schools? And at that point, Director Belial stated his understanding, and I confirmed that that was my understanding. And I have to apologize to you to say that my understanding was in error. And we have now clarified yet again with the city exactly how this works. And charter school students are included in the number of K five students that we use, that we inform the city of. That informs the amount of funding that we get. And we do pass through pro rata the dollars for those charter school students so that those charter schools can actually make use of this. So it does apply to charter schools on a pro rata basis. I think that's fair. I think there were some raised eyebrows at the last meeting when we explained how we thought it worked and people thought, huh? Well, we clarified that. So it it needs to say "public school" rather than "non-charter school."
Did, and they would be under the same criteria that they would use those dollars for arts education?
Yes. So, as I say, what we've essentially what we've done here is assert that the the intent is to add to the number if possible. Funds will be used to meet that voter-approved ratio of one to five hundred, which I think was something that felt was important. And the one full-time equivalent is clearly an aspirational goal and is limited and qualified by the district's financial outlook, et cetera. And then in section eight, the sequential course of study, it's a clear acknowledgement that the district will work with the RAC staff to align that, taking into account the situation we find ourselves in. And I think qualifying that language in a way that we felt was balanced.
Was that, I mean, I know that Director Sargent, you raised some of the questions, particularly some of that language. Before, was that adequate in regards to those things or at this point or?
I'm I'm much more comfortable with the with the changes in the language. I'm still a little bit, the sequential course of study language. I think that this gives lots of room for us to to work with this. But right now, the this this whole proposal applies very broadly to the arts. And we don't have a sequential course of study for even one strand of the arts in our schools. So I I don't see how these, and if we said really what we're going to do is have sequential course of study in music and say that's that's the strand we're going to have, then you could work with that. Or so I'm not sure how, where we end up here. And and I think it's a discussion that we'll have to have, I guess, in in the context of doing this and figure out where where it is we are going with the arts. And maybe in certain places you're going to have music and other places you're going to have art. I don't know what we're going to do. But at least this language gives us flexibility to work with what we have now and build upon that and doesn't tie us into saying, we shall do this K to twelve, because I don't see how we could possibly do that in in the short run. So so I feel that is much improved. And and the supplemental funding language gives us room to talk in the budget discussions about how we're going to use these funds and the existing funds in our schools and doesn't tie us to that we have to have a use these funds so that every school has a full-time arts teacher, whether it's two hundred students or seven hundred students. And so that makes a lot more sense to me. And then we can have discussions about with these funds adding, then perhaps we can have arts in the K eight world for all of our students. And we don't have to kind of focus all on K five students, which is what this tax provides us extra funding for K five. So we may want to use our other funding to make the course go through the eighth grade and into high schools. And so balance the funding in that way. And this, I think, provides us the flexibility to do that. So I don't know if people have other questions. I have some other questions about some things. You want to jump in here?
I have a bunch of questions. On the title of this, David, it says, intergovernmental agreement between school district number one, J. Meltum County, Oregon, and the city of Portland for one-time funds and ongoing partnerships. What does one-time funds mean?
Is it because it's going to be reassessed after one year?
I think that's, I think that's part of it. That's the title of the city put on this, yeah. And some of the funding is grant funding, which would be one-time money. There's there's capacity within the Arts Education and Access Fund for grant funding as well as continuing funding. So it's an ongoing partnership, but there is also the possibility of one-time funding.
Okay. Under the recitals, I was curious why in C we use a two thousand ten graduation rate when we have two thousand eleven numbers? And then in D, we use two thousand twelve data. There just seems to be a real inconsistency in how we're presenting it. And I, you know, especially in terms of C, where it says, as of two thousand ten, forty-four percent of Portland high school students did not graduate. Are we talking there about all of the Portland high schools that will benefit from this? And that's their combined number? Or are we talking about Portland Public Schools specifically? And why are we using two thousand ten numbers when we have two thousand eleven numbers? So I have a bunch of questions like that that I could go over with you later if you want, but
Yeah.
it, there seems to be a, there were several times when I was asking, is this referring to Portland Public Schools or Portland high, Portland schools?
So the wording of the intergovernmental agreement is standard wording for all six of the school districts. This particular version has been in the header and in the sort of very first paragraph and in the signature blocks has been customized for this district. But the wording from the word "recitals" through to the signature blocks will be the same for all six districts. So to that extent where it says Portland, it means, it does not mean Portland Public Schools, it means Portland. The, I believe.
So this says that in two thousand ten, if you look at all of Portland high schools, not just Portland Public Schools, but all Portland high schools, this is saying that fifty-six, there was a overall fifty-six percent graduation rate in two thousand ten?
That's what this is saying. And I believe that.
Well, anyway, no matter what, it would be nice to get it updated to two thousand eleven. I mean, we have those numbers. Why wouldn't we update it? But.
And I think that I I would have to check this. But I think some of this was put in to mirror some of the language that was used in the ballot material and the campaign materials and things like that, so. So the recitals mirrored that kind of conversation.
Okay.
Can I, while you're looking, next week, I pop in a quick one. So if the other districts, I forgot to ask this last time. The other districts was going through a similar process with their staff. Have they raised other questions or or just us? Oh, that's. Seriously?
I I'm not sure you really want me to answer that question in a public meeting.
Okay. Well, that doesn't sound right.
If she asks you, you can answer it. If you have the answer.
The interaction that we collectively have had with the city has been substantially more extensive than the interaction that other districts have had with the city.
So don't listen, sit right with me, that other districts and other boards wouldn't have the same opportunity that we do. And I'm talking about to the city, not to you.
Oh, it's not that they don't have the opportunity.
Okay. Oh, this that we, that they were the only ones who are having, so, okay, then put it another way. If we are the ones who are are being difficult and raising questions, are we giving the opportunity then for our colleagues and other school boards to be able to disagree with us or weigh in?
And it's not a question of being difficult, it's a question of.
I certainly didn't use the word difficult. We fulfilled our obligation in regards to our responsibilities as districts. So that's the.
I just would like this to be more of a cooperative process. I didn't realize it wasn't.
It is a cooperative process. I mean, but, you know, we're going to sign.
Not just between the city and Portland Public, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to be very clear. I I am not intending to imply that the board or anybody in Portland Public Schools is being difficult about this. I think that we've raised a number of concerns and questions. Other districts are smaller. It's not as complex for them. And the process that they go through to approve an intergovernmental agreement is not necessarily the same as we go through. And they're happy with where things are. And I, every, I have every reason to believe, based on my conversations with city staff, that they'll be fine with the form of the agreement that we end up with.
So we're not creating unintended consequences for other districts with.
Well, Ruth, keep in mind that we've got fifty-eight elementary schools. Most of the other districts have a few.
Have a couple.
So it it feels really, I think it's a really different conversation that we end up having.
I I don't think anything that, I don't think anything that we have asked for. If if the intergovernmental agreement ends up in the format that it is here, I don't believe that that is creating a problem for anybody else.
Okay.
Because I'll stop there. I don't think it's creating a problem for anybody else.
Creating additional clarity that will be appreciated by all the districts. So I think everybody will benefit from this extra attention we've paid to getting an intergovernmental agreement that reflects what we wanted to reflect.
I just don't want to add to the existing.
I think it's, it's, it's been good clarity from the process.
What I have been concerned about is that the governmental, intergovernmental agreement reflects what is actually in the measure that was voted on and that there aren't additional things that are imposed upon the district, which they're.
We may or may not be able to live up to.
We can't, we can't.
No, I have the same concerns.
I don't want us to commit to something that we can't perform on. And so I want us to be clear about what we can perform on. And honestly, if, I think, just could be that all the agreements are not the same. If that is not satisfactory and that that's something that maybe the city would have to consider. But it seems like we're getting to something that everybody can live with.
I think we're getting, I think we're getting good clarity in a document that we want good clarity. And so I think it's been worthwhile to have the process that we've had with us and with the city.
So so getting back to the clarity, I know that Director Sargent had a additional question.
I do have a couple. One, it was just a matter of interest and the document on this is fine. But what I wondered is, do our boundaries extend outside the city limits? Are all our kids within the city limits so we don't have issues about counting kids who are, where our kids reside?
The way the agreement is worded, if students are attending a a a school that is within the city limits and all of our schools are within the city limits. If it's one of our schools, it doesn't matter whether those children are city, live within the city limits or not. The only point, the only place in which the question of do the kids live within the city limits or not is an issue is with charter schools. And so when it comes to.
Actually, I mean, in the in the agreement, in the three E, K five students mean district students in grades kindergarten through five. Portland K five students means students that reside within the geographical boundaries of the city of Portland. So our kid, our students have to reside within the geographical boundaries of the city of Portland in order to be Portland K five students. And that goes into how you define.
No.
Kids, right?
No, so in four A. In four A, it says, district shall provide to the bureau the number of K five students from school within the district catchment area and the current teacher salaries. In the case of charter schools, the number shall shall include only Portland K five students.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, so so they define K five students and then they define Portland K five students, and that's only used with respect to charter schools?
Yes, because they're concerned, because charter schools have broader, could be statewide. And so they deliberately, they deliberately wanted to make sure that if there was a a school that was drawing enrollment from across the state, that it was only city kids. In the case of district-run schools as opposed to charter schools, the key thing is where is the school?
Okay.
And and so for some of the other districts, it's.
That simplifies things for us.
For us, it's, yes, it does.
Right.
All of our school, of the schools that we're, all of our schools, and not implying that charter schools aren't our schools, but for the purposes of this, the schools that the district runs are all within the city, so that it's not complicated.
All right. So.
At least it's complicated.
One other concern which I, which I sent you a note about earlier, and I don't know if you responded to it because I was in meetings and didn't get back to it, but I wanted to just discuss is how do we know, especially as this starts up, that we have adequate funds
Right.
collected from this tax that we will have, we will be able to hire teachers at that five hundred to one ratio described here. So tell me what you know about that.
Here's what I know about that. So you asked, how will the tax be collected? Individuals will file an annual tax return due on April fifteenth. The tax is effective for the two thousand twelve tax year. The first return is therefore due on April fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. The return will be simple and would be no more than one page in length. There will be a simple online filing and payment option, the use of which would be strongly encouraged. Taxpayers would have the option of paying with a credit card, bearing in mind this is a flat thirty-five dollar payment. I understand today from the city revenue, from the city revenue office that they expect to be able to give us a report on on how much money they have collected starting May fifteenth, which is, I checked today with our finance and accounting staff in terms of what what kind of protocol we have in for schools where.
I'm having a little lighting issue.
Yeah.
This place becomes a disco at night. Revenue generating.
Absolutely. I'll try not to dance, even though this is an arts measure. The, it's similar to what we would do, what we do with our foundations. So we have a a May thirtieth date for them to confirm funding. So we would have a good sense, May fifteenth, of what the revenue collection is looking like. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting, as you pointed out in your note, Director Sargent, this is the first year, so it's, you know, it's a little bit more uncertainty the first year. The funding for the teachers is the first use of funds. And the estimate for how much they expect to raise is, you know, significantly more than. So I I think if they, the last time I looked at the numbers, if they collect about half of what they expect to collect, there would be enough money to pay for the teachers. So I I think it's reasonable that when the superintendent proposes a budget on April fifteenth, coincidentally, the same day that the tax return is due, but just coincidentally, we will be assuming a level of funding and we will be able to confirm that, you know, within about a month, which is, as I say, similar to what we do for for foundations.
That's good. I I, that makes me more comfortable. That's.
Good, thank you.
That that makes, that makes good sense.
Yeah.
Let's see if I had anything. Oh, okay, so I do have another question about coordination with, the coordination with RACC provision. Says the district will coordinate with the Regional Arts and Culture Council to ensure that the district is providing high-quality arts and music education. So. So what's the intent here and what, what, what does this mean and what does this mean to us?
So I think what this means is that we will, there's a couple of mechanisms for this. One of them is that the sort of superintendent level, there's an annual meeting involving superintendents, but more importantly, there's going to be, in fact, we, Melissa Goff, Director of the Office of Teaching and Learning, and I met, I don't remember, it was last week, with folks from the mayor's office, from the campaign, from the Regional Arts and Culture Council, to start talking about how things will work, what their thinking is for the staffing, for the RAC staff in this. And it, it's really that mechanism that there'll just be regular dialogue about how this is going to work and how this builds on some of the programs like Right Brain Initiative and Every Given Child that are already there. The discussion the other day was on, to the extent that there is funding here that, where RAC will be hiring the, the coordinators that you see referenced in here, sort of discussion about what kind of role might they play, how can they best leverage what's happening in schools already, and so on and so forth. So I think our experience already has been a positive one, and they're committed to trying to find the most effective way with scarce resources to have this be as positive an experience for everybody.
Yeah, I think with that particular piece, I, I noticed that as well. I think if, I don't know if clarity needs to be made in this IGA, but the, that kind of relationship, that position, focusing more on creating opportunities for collaboration, opportunities to bring additional resources to schools, and, and opportunities for them to experience art, that's a great coordinator role to play. Oversight, however, is not a great role for coordinator, coordinator of that capacity to, to play, because we have mechanisms already in place within our schools to, to assure that we're providing a robust quality education. So again, I don't know if that's necessarily a clarity that needs to happen in the IGA, but, but it's probably something that's important for us to, to know.
Well, it is, I mean, the, the language in this is, is somewhat concerning, just because it's saying that if the, if the RACC notifies the district that they're not meeting the expectations, then that could be a dispute, which would require us to go to mediation. And so it's not, we're not talking about coordination, we're talking about judging what the quality of the arts education is. And I don't know how they're going to do that. So. I'm not sure what the purpose of this is here.
Or that they're qualified to do it.
How, yeah, how are they going to do that? And why is, why do we have that in there?
I, I think at some level, they want to have some level of accountability for the fact that they're providing us with money.
But keep in mind that cities are providing.
The taxpayers are providing the money.
And there is a citizen accountability committee also that would be looking at this in terms of this measure, which I was going to ask you about. In terms of the voter pamphlet statement itself, and this, are you done with your line of questions? Under accountability, it says, an independent citizen oversight committee that is representative of the city's diverse communities will be formed to annual review, fund expenditures, and report on the impact. And then these audits will maybe made available to the public annually. So my question on this is, I'm not sure what the city's diverse communities means in this context. I mean, would Portland Public Schools have a spot on this committee? Or do you know what this, has, has this come up at all? Because I would be curious.
The city is in the process of recruiting members for that committee.
And do you know whether that's like school community, like each district will have a representative, or is it talking about?
It's a broader thing than specifically districts. It's, it's, I mean, that's, it's the city's committee, you know, because they're the ones who put the measure on the ballot.
Oversight over the districts, so.
Well, it's, it's oversight over the, no, it's not just over the districts, because bear in mind that this, this measure does a number of things. In addition to funding teachers and providing some money to RAC for coordination, it also provides grant funding for schools and other folks. And it also provides access, by which they mean opportunities for disadvantaged communities to have access to arts programs. So that committee is, is overseeing the whole thing and the variety of, of programs and goals that the, that the Arts Education and Access Funds have.
Do you know, Superintendent, whether David Williams is involved with this and paying attention to this? Because.
He's not.
All right. Could, could we have somebody?
David Wyden and Melissa have been our two people who've been closely.
So you're looking at this as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if that's more of a government relations thing or if this is this. So I would think it would be good for us to pay attention to who's on that committee as we go. And I have one question in terms of, when this comes back to us for a vote, there was a staff report that would come with it, and I, this is, the staff report is still reflecting, I believe, the old language about, in order to meet the minimum goal of one FTE in each school, we will have to fund 13 to 14 positions in our general fund. And so if we could make sure that this is updated.
So you will. So part of what tonight's intent was, was for you to see if the IGA had reached, was closer to having addressed the concerns that were raised last time. And then we'll bring you back an updated staff report and an updated resolution. So you don't have a resolution either. And we're shooting for the 17th then is the date that it'd come back to you for a vote. So we'll go prepare.
And David, in particular, when it talked, when you talked about the charter school funding being different than what we thought, I just would like us to make sure that we understand what this will actually support in terms of positions now, because we say we have 58 schools and this would support 45, 44 to 45 positions. But if our charter school students are assumed in the overall.
Right.
Count of teachers and, and we're going to be sending some of that money outward, that.
And charter schools, charter schools would be about one and a half.
Yeah, it's not a lot, but.
Yeah. The, the clarification about charter schools is something that we learned during the day-to-day. So the, and when I did the arithmetic on how many students that is, it's the equivalent of about one and a half, but we'll update.
That's great.
We'll update all of that, given that the language now is much more about, I mean, our commitment under this wording is to meet the voter-approved ratio. With an aspiration to do more, then that changes the whole balance of. How we would phrase that particular sentence, but we went, wanted to wait and see if we got to, got to an IGA that was going to work.
Great. That's great. You did a good job.
The board will now consider the, the remaining items on the business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 4, 8, 6, 7. Oh, hang on for a second. Yeah, 4, 6, 8, 7, I'm sorry. Mr. Soffis, are there any changes to the business agenda? Well, we removed, having removed from this business agenda, resolution 4, 6, 8, 8. So there are no other items.
I had a question on one of the resolutions, but I don't know if you want to put that forward to, resolution number 4, 6, 8, 9, which is the intergovernmental agreement with the city regarding transportation safety improvements? I was just confused about something. Is there anybody here who can? Oh, great. Thank you.
Do we want to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So do I have a motion a second to adopt the business agenda? Director, one of the directors, whether, Atkins, or. No, seconds. So now discussion of business agenda, Director Regan has a question.
So on resolution number 4, 6, 8, 9, which is an intergovernmental agreement with the city regarding funding of transportation safety improvements, and there's a cap on $5 million on it, I had a question, which is, under B.I., it talks about what this money would be used for, and it looks like the money comes out of the capital bond, all of it.
That's correct.
So what I was confused about.
Can you tell me exactly where you are in the agreement, though?
I'm looking at the recital, although I could look at, I think you had a staff memo that came out with it as well, right?
Did you say B as in boy?
B, and the very first bullet under B. It's number I or number one, however you want to look at it.
I'm looking at the recital as well, there's. Oh, and the resolution, sorry.
All right, here, CJ, go ahead and look at the staff memo, it'll, it'll be the same question.
That's okay, I was looking at the IGA and not the resolution, sorry about that.
Well, the staff memo says that this limits the district's required off-site transportation improvements to $5 million for life of the 2012 eight-year bond program, so I'm assuming that the money comes out of the bond.
That's correct.
What I was confused about is it directs funding priority to middle schools that added younger grades, K-5, through the district's K conversion process. And I don't recall us talking about that as part of our bond, so I was confused about that. I, I understand the transportation improvements related to our comprehensive rebuilds, that, that makes sense to me, but the other pieces of it, I don't understand how those come out of the bond. Thanks.
Paul Cathcart, Project Manager with Facilities, the resolution is kind of pointing back to the IGA, which was a kind of a negotiated agreement with the city that stemmed from some zoning code changes a few years ago. And the city's desire to have kind of a broader look at transportation needs at schools. And part of what prompted that question was schools that did not go through the city's land use process through the conversion. So part of what we discussed with them is taking a look at those schools through this process to fund that. But the priority is going to be on those schools receiving modernization. And the IGA also talks to the city and the district being able to look at what the higher priority schools are. So it may include those middle schools, but if there are other higher priority schools, then we'll devote funding to developing the transportation plans for those schools.
So I guess I wanted to make sure, under B.I., that when we talk about these three things that will be paid for out of this, that that is within the scope of our current 2012 bond, not our May 2011 bond. It, it looks to me like this whole process started before the May 2011 bond.
It did.
And is now continuing. And I guess what I wanted to make sure, as we approve this, that this is all still cool within the bond that we just passed.
It is consistent with the ballot measure language and the explanatory statement language for the November 2012 bond measure.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
All right. Is there any more discussion? There was no public comment, I take it, on this? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda's approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Senator Representative Garcia voting.
Yes.
And our next meeting for the board, we have a retreat on December 10th at 6:00 P.M. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.